Call me in order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for coming, everybody. I had a nice day today, made me wear my spring colors. Easter will be here soon, right? Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufal.
Here.
Chris Origan.
Here.
Kristi Hildman.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Okay, we are all here, I'd like to make a motion, amend the agenda, under nine and new business, we're gonna add the police department building structural inspection, that's gonna be from project control of $5,187, and also amend to approve the county work order for our road. It, let me get an amount here, the total cost would be 110,400, which we would be responsible for 60,400 after our county match, we're gonna include Muskrat Run with Lake Point. So we get another road paved, so. Support, got motion of support. All in favor of the amended agenda, please, any discussion? Good. All in favor of the amended agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, okay, motion carries. Next we have bills payable, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for bills payable in the amount of $64,776.75.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion of support, any discussion? Here and now, roll call vote, please.
Chris Origan.
Yes.
Kristi Hildman.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, next is the supervisor's report, it's a long one, so I'm sorry, but we were busy, yeah, I am kinda.
Lots of good information.
But, okay, I always start with high water report, in our current water level, I write this on Thursday, Thursday is 577.3, I think we're at .2 now, aren't we? We're around there, about the same.
It's down a little bit.
And my big worry is the projected lake levels north of us, and here, and they're still projecting there, July, of being four to, about four inches higher than it was their all-time high last year. So that water does have to come down here, but they are projecting that our levels in the river will be above where it was last year until it hits July, and then leveling out where we were, pretty much were, last year. But there is a huge cone of uncertainty. The House of Representatives just suspended the rules of the House Bills 5401, 5402, and 5463, that's the no-wake bills, they suspended its rules to the calendar, it's called, all three bills passed on a unanimous vote, so basically they are being placed on the Senate, or being handed over to the Senate tomorrow. And I've been, you know, talking to a lot of people and trying to get it streamlined, and I got streamlined so fast, Wednesday morning, I'm going to be testifying in front of the Senate DNR Committee on behalf of 5401 and 5402, at eight o'clock Wednesday morning. I was just reviewing a few, or the bills, I haven't really, you know, I just got them today, there are some tweaks we need to make. For instance, they let us, it's a 5401, it's a two-week calendar, or two-week order, and before, we could renew it as many, as often as we wanted to, to extend it for as long as we needed to. But in their infinite wisdom, they say, the limit may be reissued once per calendar year, so that gives us 28 days. And I know what their thinking is, oh, and they also, originally we had a $500 per offense, for the first offense, for the tickets, they dropped that down to $100 for the first offense, second offense 500. And their thinking is, this other bill, 5463, is a no-wake bill, but it takes a lot longer to get put in place, it's got a few more, few more hoops to jump through. They're thinking while we do this 28-day thing with 5401, we could start the ball rolling for the 5463 bill, and put up a six-month no-wake rule. Problem I have with that, I haven't gone through it real granular yet, it's for all vessels, I mean, they even delineate sea planes, I mean, anything that floats on the water. And I don't know, my personal opinion is that we just legislate 26-foot and above, no-wake and below 26-foot, still remain off the 200-foot rule. So, I'll be dealing with that Wednesday morning in the Senate. And although I was happy to see, they were actually looking for date restrictions, that we couldn't enact this from June 15th to Labor Day, and I called everybody I knew up in Lansing, and said, don't, if that's the true, don't even waste your ink on the bill because it won't do us any good, or carve the St. Clair River, and I threw in Saginaw River, carve those two rivers out of the legislation. But, you know, we'll, we're gonna do as best we can Wednesday when I'm in Lansing. We have sandbags, our sandbag machine was delivered, had community service out two weekends ago, and they did a pretty good job filling sandbags, we were supposed to get them last week, but the weather wasn't very conducive, so we do have, have them scheduled for the next two weeks to come out here, and we'll get our stock of sandbags built up, and we're ready to go. And as I said before, the township's making available of unfilled sandbags to residents for a cost of $18 per bag, they, or per hundred, per hundred, sorry, per hundred bags, 18 cents apiece. They'll be available at the township office during normal business hours, there will be a limit of 200 bags per transaction, but once deployed, the residents can come back and get more as they please. The township also make available filled sandbags, that's, you know, as they are available. You must pay for the bags in advance at the Clay Township office during, and the limit is 200 bags per transaction, and allow two transactions per property owner. The office will issue you a paid voucher, in the amount that you purchase, and you can pick them, pick them up at the yard, it's gonna be where our waste, yard waste recycling yard is, on Muskrat Run. The yard will be open 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, Tuesdays and Thursdays, also Saturdays, Sunday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. You can, and we're doing the voucher because not many people can put 200 loaded sandbags in their car, so, you know, you can grab 20, or however many you want, go and deploy them, and come back and get the rest. We're gonna get this ball rolling as soon as we can, we gotta do some adjustments, which we're gonna talk about later at the, at the yard, and we're in the process of getting it staffed. And I did wanna mention too, occasionally the township does, do receive expired, out-of-date sandbags from the Army Corps of Engineers, those will be available for free as the limit, as they come in, and those will be also available at our township office during normal business I still haven't confirmed if anyone's gonna be a distributor in town for water diverters, but I know there's one on Harrison's Island called Accudam, and if you go online, they're all over the place. The company that we used, and I'm not, well, we just used them last year, they're the cheapest I could find online last year, it was Aire Industries, A-I-R-E Industries. And if you do an order online, if you put in the promo code TUBE sale, T-U-B-E-S-A-L-E 10, tube sale 10, they'll give you a 10% discount. We had our joint meeting last week with the ZBA and the Plan Commission, and we did a little, a mini-review of the master plan, and it was mostly about going forward with boat houses and shipping containers, I myself thought it went well, and we do have set joint training sessions in New Baltimore for our ZBA and our Plan Commission, I think the ZBA's gonna be in New Baltimore.
In 31st.
31st, and then the Plan Commission's gonna be here, so that's cool, we're spreading out the, actually, it doesn't, won't even cost us anything, we're kinda ponying on their, their shirt tails for this. Met with the County Road Commission, mainland gravel, the price for their stone, it's gone up about 10, 12%, the island is still the same because it's delivered by freighter, and truthfully, we don't use a whole lot on the mainland, but I think we got about three miles of stone road. And, oh, I talked about the Muskrat Run, which is a gen item now, and, you know, I attached our numbers somewhere for our ditching and our road match, with our carryover, what was allowed, our match money for our road projects this year is 58,000, over 58,000, and our drain, we have 17,000, almost 18,000 in there. The problem is with drains, truthfully, the County Road, they've been so busy that they haven't had time to finish our, our projects, I know we still have outstanding drain on island by Bar Harbor to finish, and we're looking at expanding the drain that we've started on by Holland, but we do this as priority, those are the two worst places in the township for drain backup. We probably have five or six that we could do, but I know with the high water, they're, their manpower's definitely taxed quite a bit, too. So, also, with that, once the Starville Bridge is repaired, in April, May sometime, Chris, they're planning on repaving all of Starville, all the way up, so, basically from where we left off in our township going north.
That's a great project.
So, yeah, and the Flamingo Bridge, that's been a challenge for everybody, we all know it needs to be replaced, and we've been working on this project probably three years now, securing grants and money to do so, because, I mean, this is a local bridge, it would come upon the township to pay for the whole thing, which bridges are expensive. The engineering estimated cost of this bridge is $1,560,000. Well, we've been working hard, and kudos to the state, or the County Road Commission, doing a lot of help with it. Of that, 1.5 million actually, $1,372,000, and $400,000 will be taken care of by state and federal grants. The county's gonna kick in, 187,600, it's from grant, you know, it's basically a grant which from the county, and that's what our quarter mill comes out of, for the road commission. And so that leaves the total cost for the township, for 1.5 million dollars, will be 9,400, so that's a win, we can handle that, versus 1.5 million dollars. Problem is, to get these federal grants, you can't even start the engineering till this calendar year, and it's a challenge, they haven't quite figured, finished it yet, they're in the process, and then what we have to do is wait for DEQ to approve it, and by the time this is, we get all our ducks in row and everything approved, then, then we can go out for bid, and it's gonna be, you know, later in midsummer, and towards the end of summer, so for construction for this year, we'll end up paying a lot more, so when it goes out to bid, I'm trying to say, the shovels probably won't hit the ground till spring of next year. Goes out to bid, they're, they're gonna put a complete date by May 1. So, so we gotta be a little patient, but, you know, we're getting lots of money returned for our patients, so. We've already started working on our million-dollar saw grant project, and let's see, this past week, actually, today, we met over with Oakdale, solved a few problems on that project, met with Blue Horseshoe, and blew our materials on many issues. We received our initial report from OHM on the sewer interceptor, they're going to have something, a formal report for us, probably three, four weeks from now, and because it is Project 50%, us and 50% with IRA Township, I'm suggesting that we have a joint meeting with IRA, and we could have it here, and they're in favor of that, because we both have to be on the same page for this, but I'm, you know, we're, we're talking, it's probably gonna be around a 3.5 million dollar project for this, we'll be able to bond it probably through the county, with a 20-year bond, so it's not as painful, but even though that's 100% in Clay Township, you know, IRA pays for half of it, because we're, we're carrying their fluids also. Okay, had a meeting last week with Senator Lowers, and I, there was a few people from the Harrison's Island St. Clair Flats Association, and the Michigan State Police to go over the outstanding issues from our high water and ferry meeting. Meeting went well, they answered some questions, and we, we set an April date to meet again to, for an update on, on the status and everything. Okay, where am I, there, there's submitted paper, okay. Oh, last week I attended a high water meeting in Macomb County in New Baltimore, it went well, I don't know, I got and spoke for about 15 minutes or so, and gave them our knowledge that we have in Clay Township. There's a grant that just came out, it's a one-to-one match for county, or bike path resurfacing, and we have our, a bike path that goes, well, really, to Roberts Road, being by the state park, all the way to Algonack to Michigan Street, and it does need to be resurfaced. It's a $50,000 minimum for the match, and actually, there is a big chunk of our, our back bike path that was underwater, I'm guessing 100 yards, what do you think, 100 yards, Bill?
Yeah, pretty much.
That's what I was thinking, what I was thinking about there, instead of building it up a foot with, you know, making asphalt, is actually pricing out, to put an actual boardwalk over that, that section. And, and it definitely can, can use some resurfacing there. Been doing a lot of work, and we got, actually, Chris's branches here, we've been doing a lot of work on the purchase for the beach park, and other than that, about it, we got all kinds of rec programs, I know we have a bus trip to a Red Wings game, and some other stuff planned out, and if you have any questions on those, go to, if you're on Facebook, like us on Clay Township Parks and Rec, it's all there, or give us a call, we got a whole list of fun stuff to do. So that concludes my supervisor's report, how long was that?
Two hours and 10 minutes.
Too, too long, right, it was too long. All right, public comments, do we have any public comments?
All right, good evening, thanks so much for having me, I'm Chris Bunch with Six Rivers Land Conservancy, it's a pleasure to be here, I just thought I would show up tonight, and let you guys put a face with the name, I've got some stuff that I will hand you about the Conservancy, and also a rendering of the, the future park that we're working on and talking about here tonight. There you go.
Thank you.
So, very excited to be here, very excited to be working on this project, real grateful for you guys' commitment to doing this, it's a great opportunity, I wanna start, however, by acknowledging and congratulating Artie for his fine work a week ago Friday at the Pheasants Forever banquet.
[laughing]
He was running the raffle, the Michigan State versus U of M raffle, and Michigan State won, trounced them resoundingly, so nicely done.
Go green.
Go green, go white. At any rate, we have been working with, with you guys, Clay Township, and with the county on acquiring that property there on Point Tremble Road, and things are well underway, the county has got the trust fund grant proposal well in hand, getting ready to submit that, we have an application for financing in, in fact, I'm meeting with representative of the Conservation Fund tomorrow morning, we're gonna go take a look at the property, and other pieces of the process are underway, the title search has been done, and the environmental assessment has been done, so we're queuing everything up to get this thing acquired by late spring probably, and, and then we will hold it while you guys go through that trust fund grant process, and presuming success, and I think that's a, you know, pretty high probability there, you'll bring back about 70, 74% of the purchase price, so the property will cost you about 25%.
This is a whole rendering.
That's a, that's a rendering that they did the last time around.
And it doesn't include this, or now includes this.
Yeah, there are a couple, there are a couple other potential additions.
Lower right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And potentially another piece here, which makes it pretty exciting, so I just wanna point that out, this was, this was done, is there a date on here, about three, four years ago?
Yeah, I would say almost five or six years ago.
Yeah, so it's not totally accurate, this is just what we had.
13.
Okay.
But the, and we are working with a couple other landowners to add a little bit to this, and we'll, you know, we won't say a whole lot about that until we get something signed and in the bag, but we're pretty close on that, and so we're very excited to be working on this. I guess the only other thing I would add to that is that Six Rivers has a long relationship with the Natural Resources Trust Fund, and we were asked to host their meeting in August again this year, so they wanna be in Detroit this year, so we're not gonna be able to get them all the way up here to look at this property, but we will definitely make sure that we have Artie and Mark Bouchou come down and do a presentation to the trust fund board while we have them close by, and.
We'll do a drone.
Yeah, yeah, I think Bill's working on a, Bill Greitop has been working hard on this, and I think he's working on trying to get a, a drone video done, so, at any rate, it's well in hand and well underway, and we're very excited to be working on it with you guys. So if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them, otherwise, I look forward to being able to come back and report that we own the property on your behalf.
I just wanna, I know it's an agenda item, but Chris has been working hard for us, and there's been a lot, a lot of emails and headaches behind the scenes going on, but we're getting through them pretty, pretty good, I must admit, so.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Chris, and thanks for coming out.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board, last meeting, I came here and I gave each member a packet about my issue on Green Drive with the neighbor next door, I, in that packet, I left my phone number for any board member to contact me, nobody did, actually, Mr. Bryson said on camera that he would contact me, and has not. The letter that your inspector sent to this lot owner was sent out on January 8th, gave him 10 days to respond, as of this morning, Cindy says he has not. You know, your inspector says that the neighbor is creating a nuisance, the water is running off onto adjacent properties, I have spent many thousands of dollars, and, and many hours trying to rectify the situation, and, and this issue would not be an issue if Clay Township had an ordinance similar to what I just handed to you, that Algonack did in May of 2019, which every other community that I deal with has, you know, I took this to court, the judge says you have no ordinance, you have no case, get out. So I'm here again asking, is this lot owner going to be required to comply with your ordinance that your, your inspector has cited him on? I've got about two months to figure out, what am I going to do? I mean, is there anybody would like to respond to that? If this was your property, you would, I would hope, take a different position, because this is, this is.
I did call Judge West's office, because you had a.
A case there, I was just getting.
And they said that they, there wasn't anything in writing yet, they said it was gonna take a couple of weeks, so, you know, I was kinda waiting for that, and because, you know, I, I have a hard time going against a judge's ruling.
And, and we did discuss that, Mr. Bryson, and the issue was, I said to him, the, you know, the inspector said this, it says, I don't care, the issue, my case was about, does he have, through negligence, does he have the obligation to protect the property? And he said, because you don't have this ordinance, you don't have, and neither do I have that under tort law, which, to me, I don't agree with, but that's irrelevant, but I do have, and I should've thought of this six months ago or a year ago, I do have an ordinance that says you cannot allow water to run off of your neighbor's property, I have that, you guys have that, your inspector has told them, you gotta comply. I mean, this guy told, we did the seawalls, five of us, in 2016, he told the contractor, start with mine first, and then, you know, in the middle, and then, in the end, he said, well, do mine now, he didn't have a permit through the Army Corps, I mean, he was gonna put this, this contractor in the wringer, this guy tells us all sorts of crap, I mean, and he told me that I'm going to develop every inch of this property, and you know what, from what I'm seeing, he might just get away with that, might as well just expect my, you know, his house to be six inches from the lot line, no front yard, side yard, no impervious surface, no nothing, you know, I've.
Has he done anything yet?
He has not, but I'll tell you what, but I'm telling you, but he hasn't done anything, he hasn't done.
Okay, you want us to write someone a ticket for run and stop sign before they run it?
No, I don't, but I'm saying, he has not put the retaining wall that is required. I mean, and that has nothing to do with the court case, that has to do with your ordinance that you do have, that you can get him to stick with. And my point is, is I'm extrapolating it out, saying, I don't really know what this guy's, you know, I mean, the Army Corps has told him, and when we spoke on the phone, Mr. Bryson, you said, right away, you said, they're not gonna let him do that, they're absolutely not, this is all retaliatory, because all the neighbors said, we don't want you taking a 22-foot canal, taking it down to 16 feet, so he can save money on a drive-over bridge on a 46-foot wide lot, he won't cut his grass, he won't, you know, sandbag, I mean, he won't do anything, and.
Why won't he cut his grass?
Because he's, he's mad at us, he mean, he wants us to.
Does he have a bridge to go across?
He no longer does, he no longer has access to do that, but he.
So he told me, the reason he doesn't cut his bridge, or cut his grass, is because you won't let him cross on a lawnmower on your bridge.
I, we, none of us will allow him to do it any longer.
So how you expect, you're complaining to us, he doesn't cut his grass, but you won't let him across your bridge to cut his grass.
He has a boat, and he has done something.
Okay, I know, there's more to the story.
There's a lot to the story.
The point is, there's more to the story than you're telling us.
The point of the story is, he's stuck it to the neighbors every way possible, and, you know, I'm the one that's leading the charge, and quite frankly, it's the northern properties that allowed him to do it in the past, and they have now secured, I mean, it's, it's turned into a little mini-war zone, people who have lived there for three generations, you know, dread the thought of having to go to their property now, because this guy is so miserable. And by the way, he, he didn't cut his grass before, we maintained it for him, but he is now refusing, and the bottom line is, I mean, should I give him my car so he can go to work, too, I mean, it's illogical, you have an ordinance that says you must maintain your own water, every city has that ordinance, and he's had a letter on the books for almost two months now that he's not responded to.
Two months, yep.
And so, I've got two months until this comes to head, so I have to come here and say, are we going to deal with this? I mean, if any of you guys wanted to come out and see it, you're welcome to come, you know, my phone number was on there, please come by and see, I mean, when I came home from Mexico in May, beginning of May, to see my house surrounded by water, I was like, this is insane, and it's all retaliatory, because, you know, I guess we should all just say, yes, Army Corps, we will give you permission to take it down to 10 feet, whatever it takes for you to just get your property maintained. Now, I mean, I've never, I mean, I never even met the guy, so, until last summer, but the bottom line is, they had all had a relationship with him before I bought it, and now they're, they're disgusted, so, but, you know, are we going to enforce this ordinance, is why I'm here again, and I'll be here the next meeting, I mean, I'm. Is why I'm here again, and I'll be here the next meeting, I mean, I've probably got, what, three meetings left until I have to figure out what to do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That was my question, though, that was, I mean, it's a long spiel.
Just comments, public comments.
So is anybody going to enforce this letter that your inspector wrote?
I'll, I'll be talking to him again and see what the, get, ask him for an update.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Okay, any other public comments?
Good evening, Bill Greitopf, 9200 North River Road. I'm your current county commissioner, and all the conversation you heard tonight from Chris Bunch and what Artie was talking about, we have been involved in this project for going on eight years. I found a date on that drawing, Artie, of May of 2013, and we actually started sometime prior to that, so it's been a long, ongoing thing. The one thing I really wanted to say tonight, and the reason that I came here tonight was to say thank you to Clay Township's board, to Artie and everybody else involved for the support that you have been giving us and that I suspect you will continue to give us in getting this South End Park done. Twenty-eight miles to the closest county park from my house, and we have been trying forever to get one down here. Finally, I don't know if the moon's lined up or the stars lined up, but something lined up, and it has come together in the combination of what Artie's been doing, what I've been doing, Mark Brochu, Chris Bunch, he's been just absolutely phenomenal with dealing with this stuff. Our administration at our end, other county commissioners supporting this, Jeff Baum, all of these people have brought this thing to some kind of a point where I think it's going to be exactly what we're looking for down here. I was talking with Cindy in the office tonight for a few minutes, and she tells me that they have expanded their recreation to Ira Township. I could see no reason why we shouldn't bring Ira Township into the fold here along with Algonac and Clay, maybe Cotterville, I don't know if Marine City, but would love to see three or four or five communities down here kind of come together and take a little ownership, put a little skin in the game, so to speak, and make this park everybody's park. So thank you once again for your support, guys.
Thank you.
Anybody going to respond?
No, this is public comments. Sorry.
Thank you.
Only if you'll respond to us up at the county. Okay, any more public comments? Seeing none. Consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda of the board meeting minutes of February 17th, 2020, check reports. Thank you, communication from the council on aging, and request from the assessor for her IAAO membership of $200.
Support.
Okay, a motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. What?
None here.
Okay. Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Now we have the fire chief's report, I'm sure it'll be shorter than mine.
Good evening. Chief's report for February 2020. I attended one meeting in the month of February, and that was the Fire Chiefs Association, and general business was conducted. The ice rescue class for February was canceled due to poor ice conditions, but on a good note, we did send one of our firefighters, our captain, to one of the train-to-trainer classes, so he will be teaching that to us, and I plan on sending a few more to that class, so we'll have a couple more to be able to teach that class. Lieutenant Hubert will be attending ICS 300, 400 class this month and next month, so he'll be certified to that level. The fire department also had a training class, it's a McNeil Emergency Vehicle Class. All the firefighters attended that, and that was a classroom portion for vehicles over 26,001 pound, that would be for the fire trucks, defensive driving. They'll do the practical portion of that class once the weather breaks, and we'll be doing that class every three years, and they'll do the practical every year. So they'll stay proficient in that. We did have five applications turned in the fire department, we did conduct interviews last week. Out of the five, we plan on hiring four, and I plan on bringing those on next board meeting to you. We are losing a few firefighters from the department due to moving on to full-time status in other departments, so. That's it.
Any questions for chief?
Do we have any selections or any progress on the fire trucks?
Yes, they've been ordered.
Yep.
We did the pre-build.
Oh, you did?
Yep, and we should get them around the year from this March, April timeframe.
Great, I was looking for the pre-build.
Yep.
That's great.
I did do, I did submit two grant, we did submit two grants, one for AEDs and two for two high-volume portable pumps, one for the island, one for the mainland, 1,500 gallon per minute pumps.
Those are FEMA grants, right?
Yes.
Yep. And we're going to resubmit for our truck, right?
Yes, yes.
So...
You have anything planned for the CPR machine that drives, using it right now?
That grant that we submitted for, that'll be seven new AEDs, and then there'll be two Lardal machines, which automatically do the chest compressions. That will, one will be for the island and one will be on the mainland. They do come in handy, it does free a few firefighters up to where they can do the, that machine will do the compressions, while the firefighters can do other, other things to help the patient out.
You think regular people, or not regular people, but public can operate that machine like they do with the AEDs?
Once they're trained, they probably could.
Those machines work really well when you, when they're on the gurney, or if you're carrying someone from upstairs, downstairs, or downstairs, upstairs, am I right?
Yep.
Because it's hard to do compressions when you're, you know, carrying someone on a stretcher.
If we get a, say, a full arrest out in, on Musqueamook Bay...
Right, yeah, yeah, on the boat.
It'd be perfect to put that machine on and let that machine do, and all we do is do ventilations, and that machine does all the compressions for us, so.
Perfect.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks, chief.
Yep.
All right, moving right along, new business. First thing is, I'm getting authorization to sign this letter to Chris, who you just heard from and met. Basically, it's our commitment to help with the county match for funds to get that property for the county parks beach.
Make a motion to authorize Artie Bryson to sign a letter to the Six Rivers Land Conservancy, dated March 3rd, 2020.
Support. Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion on this?
Letter of commitment, correct?
Yes. Yeah, and it probably, we wouldn't have to kick in the actual money until the grant comes to, you know, it'd be right before we close on the property, about a year and a half from now, so.
Okay.
That's what, that DNR trust fund, to get through it, if everything goes smoothly, it takes a year and a half, if not even longer.
The same grant we just did with the Crispin Drank, the kayak launch on the island.
And so to get all our ducks in a row, and then that, at that point, you know, right before closing, that's when it would be required, well, we'd probably show up with the, with the money at closing to purchase the property from Six Lakes, actually.
Rivers.
Rivers.
Seven.
Six. I always, Six Rivers, Six Rivers, not seven. Sometimes I call it Five Lakes, I get it all messed up.
Are we going to, are we going to budget this 200 grand?
Yeah.
Of course, the next year and a half?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next year's budget will contain some...
Yeah, I mean...
Start earmarking some funds.
Yep, the county's committed for, you know, I checked, talked to some of the commissioners and Jeff Baum, and I mean, they're going to be looking at probably three, four million dollars in development, you know, once we, we get it, and they're, I mean, they do want it turned into a class beach park, and something we can all be proud of. And like I say, this is the old rendering he gave us. The property we're getting is going to be quite a bit more on the water, and plus, you know, we're working on a couple other pieces that's not showing on the rendering to get it, so.
Do we have, do we have any support from either the county or the Six Rivers Conservancy group for those additional properties?
Oh, yeah.
Or will this fall solely on our shoulders?
No, no, it's all, it's all going to be wrapped in, in the grant, it's one grant. So actually, they're combining two other pieces of property in with the application. The application has to be in by May or April 1st, so we're kind of getting it all together in a hurry. If for some reason one of those pieces drop out, drop out, or has changed, we do have a chance in September to amend it.
Okay.
And amend the grant application. And at that time, that's when we go and tell them why this is such a great idea. At the DNR, we went a couple of years ago for our island, and they, they really liked it because we flew the whole Crispin Drank with a drone. And hey, this is the chunk we're talking about, and it went over real well, actually. I mean, I think it's a win-win all the way around. Talked to Algonac briefly, or Denise, and I, they're for it, and they're going to help out a little bit, I believe. I don't want to speak for them, but I know we're going to approach them at some point in time to kick in a few bucks, and it's not a bad idea with Ira, too, so. But like I say, you know, the number one thing that we've been lacking, well, we're lacking a good hotel here, but, you know, we say, hey, you know, beach, property or park on the, on the water, we can make a nice beach out of, so, and this is it.
Sounds good.
Right, do we have motion and support yet?
We do.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of, no, that's right, it's a contract.
You can sign it.
Roll call. Actually, it's not a contract, but roll call.
That's, I have to commit that. Kristi Heltman?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kupel?
Yes.
Chris Redden?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, next we have Cindy wrote up, Cindy Babish, request to, for our Red Wings bus trip, and this is all recouped from the people who go on that trip. Do we have any tickets left? Does anybody know?
Who'd you got now?
Okay.
I think from last time I counted, who was going, you know, I mean, I had a list, there's a few left, I think.
So...
I make a motion to approve the Parks and Rec Red Wings bus trip for $1994 out of line 208811.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next, hey, we received a grant through Eagle for our getting rid of old tires. Basically, when we did our island cleanup first weekend in June, you know, we take people's tires, and there was a charge associated with that at our landfill, but we didn't care, we just wanted the township cleaned up and all the old tires out of the ditches and, and everything else. Unless it's hanging from a tree from a rope, we don't want an old tire in our township, and...
Tell the people what Eagle stands for.
DNR.
Environment, Great Lakes and Energy.
Yeah, Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes and Energy, E-G-L-E, Eagle. So anyhow, they're going to pay us $2,000 to get rid of our, our tires this year, so I'm looking for authorization to accept this grant.
I'll make a motion for you to accept the tire grant and do all the 10 pages of administrative paperwork for it.
Yes.
I know.
10 pages.
It's incredible.
Support.
For $2,000. For $2,000.
No, I'll make a motion to, for the acceptance of the tire grant from Eagle for the supervisor to sign to accept.
Support. Okay, any more discussion?
Half our board package.
Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Eagle.
Half of the board package.
Let me get this paper up. Okay.
Money had come from Eagle.
Yeah, right. Next, we have to approve a job description for our assistant assessor job description. As you know, Steve's leaving us, and...
He's gone.
What?
He's gone.
He's gone.
He's not leaving, he's, he's gone.
Lester's, he left us.
Yes.
And what we're planning on doing, but we need a job description, we're going to slide Bonnie, that's in our office, into the assistant assessor's position, and that'll be two days a week, she'll be over there, and eventually we will backfill intern for, like a student, to help do some of the field work for Sherry. Right now, this is for the job description for assistant assessing.
She'll be moving to assessing, she'll be just doing field work that Steve was doing two days a week.
Right.
But she'll be full-time assessing then. I'll make a motion to approve the assistant assessor job description. Support.
Motion and support. And we will hopefully train, I mean, she says she's committed to, because, you know, our assessing, they're hard shoes to fill in this township, and we'll be grooming her to be our next, next full-time assessor when that sad day comes that Sherry leaves us.
Well, we got a while.
We, but we have a long time.
She's like a spring chicken.
That's right. So any motion and support? Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, now we have a job description for our field appraiser support.
I'll make that motion to approve the field assessor's support job description. It's an internship. Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion?
So if I'm, I'm looking at the big picture here, right?
Just so I can grasp it.
So we're sliding Bonnie over to assessing?
Yep.
Correct? And that's going to basically pick up where Steve left off eventually?
Yes.
Okay, and so, in addition to that, we're looking for another person in the assessing department to backfill some of the site inspections?
There you go. No, sorry, I was running some reports. Yeah, basically what that's going to do is, that's going to be just seasonal, temporary, just summer for...
The one we're looking at right now?
Yes. Yes, the internship, yep. It's going to be just seasonal, summer, extra feet on the ground, I guess, and taking pictures and stuff, no real pricing, or a little bit of just checking our measurements to see what we have, but no new construction, anything like that. So we, I've actually talked to Fort Grashit, St. Clair, City of St. Clair and stuff, and they utilize this type of program with college and high school, and it works out really well. Because we have a state mandated, what we're recommended is 20% of the township per year, which with the size of us, is very, very hard, which is a couple people. So I'm thinking, you know, we can pick up just those extra photos and things like that to help with that.
We have to visit, what, 1,500?
Yeah, 20% of the township.
Yeah, I mean, fifteen, between, yeah, 1,600 properties a year.
Yeah.
To verify.
Okay, so this intern then is getting his or her marching orders from you?
Right, mm-hmm.
Okay. But is still under control of the supervisor?
Yeah, ultimately, because that's who I report to, so.
Right.
Yep, mm-hmm. And it would be in teams, you know, maybe with Bonnie initially, and then I would do new construction, they would just do neighborhood, you know, update photos, and, you know, if it works well, I would like to expand that, and maybe have two next season, you know, and kind of go from there, if it works out well.
And then because you're scooping Bonnie because of the loss of Steve? And then because you're scooping Bonnie because of the loss of Steve, so our next agenda item is to backfill the office.
Getting there.
Yeah.
Just so I understand how it's all coming together, right?
All going downhill.
We're kind of moving.
I just want to make sure I'm, I'm following the...
There's a logical pri, procedure here.
Okay. I just, I wanted to ask the obvious.
Yeah, because there's always that gap in the front office. It seems like even when I was hired in, I was continually pulled out front to kind of cover lunches and sick and stuff. So, then you're losing the concentration that you need in the department that the person was intended for. So, we're hoping to circumvent that by putting, when we move Bonnie, those two days where Steve was, then, you know, backfill that and still kind of cover that gap.
Is there ever a possibility that we can ever get an org chart together, and so we all have one, take a look at? I mean, you know, it makes sense to me.
Yeah, township org chart.
Should be in your policy manual.
I thought we had one.
Did we?
It's in the policy, that big red book.
Yeah.
Well, it's not updated, it's in there.
Well, we'll have to tweak it, I'm sure.
Well, I don't think there's names in there, I think there's just positions.
Well, I, well, I say an org chart, I like to see the names and positions, so we know who's who.
We could probably grab it and fill in the blanks.
Right.
Just put down anybody's name, okay?
Sure.
You could put down yours, if you like.
Your name would be in every one of them.
Okay, any more questions, or, on, um, on the job description for field appraiser?
The field appraiser is...
Intern.
Or the intern.
Field appraiser support.
Support.
Going to be a, a ride-along person, or, or driving a, a township vehicle?
No, it'd be with a, with a, another member, a team, either myself or Bonnie initially. And unless we had them, had two, then they would go out, you know, on their own. The other municipalities, the people actually use their own vehicle. So, we usually never send anyone out by themselves, except for my, myself, I'm, I'll go by myself, but everyone else, so. Initially, yeah, it'll be township vehicle and with someone, Bonnie, either Bonnie or myself.
We, we've actually had this position before in, in, in the past, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not this one.
Not that I'm aware of, yeah.
I remember coming up there and getting field sheets from interns, from high school kids.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we had, um...
Abby?
Abby.
Abby.
She was in the office.
Or in the office, right. And the reason that we're kind of switching that position now to a field appraiser support is because of the training involved in the office with the computer and the software. It seemed like by the time we got that person trained, they were ready to, to leave. And so, this way, you know, they can go, and this, we'll get another one the next year for the photos and stuff like that, so, yeah, it's, we're going to, I think it'll work out. Yep.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Thanks, Sherry.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have motion and support, right, for field appraiser support job description?
Yes.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we have assessing, is you authority to hire a seasonal intern for that field appraiser support job?
Oops, I said it down too soon.
That we just approved.
I'll make a motion to grant authority to hire one seasonal intern, do we want to say in the assessing department?
Sure.
For the field appraiser support, just job description.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion on that? We're going to probably contact the high school?
Um, yeah, I actually have a couple.
We got a couple people, don't we?
This is already...
All right, sounds good. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have the treasurer's request for part-time administrative support to backfill for Bonnie moving over.
So, I am looking to bring back Leah Bakken, who filled in when we had a medical vacancy this past summer and fall. And she's already trained and familiar with the township and our policies and our procedures, so I'd like to bring her back.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Yes. Support.
Okay, we have motion support, when would this take effect?
March 12th.
Oh, hello, I can read. All right, any more discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Getting busy.
Next, we have a, a quote for some fencing in the yard, does is to make it, um, basically get in shape our sandbagging, uh, operation, um...
Security?
Yes, so that everything's secured, and it will, will be, we'll have a, a loop drive, so they come in one and out the other, so no backing up in trailers or, or anything like that.
Does that include new gates, or repair the existing gates?
Both. Both. Um, we had a wide range of quotes.
I can't read, let me ask questions.
And I think our best quote, yeah, 4875.
Somebody we're comfortable with? That is the experience. I'd like a motion to approve the Nationwide Construction Group and DPW Yard Fencing, an amount of $4,875, coming from line item 101, 443-97000.
Support.
We have motion and support.
Are we getting a discount?
Compared to the other two quotes?
Yeah, I mean, they're all over the board, I, and he can start fairly quick, right?
Yeah, he said, uh, next week.
Okay, so we got to get her, get her done. What's... Any more discussion on this?
What are these two different amounts on here, just out of curiosity? I see one for $6,000, and one for nine, or one for $5,000.
Three different quotes. First quote, Na, Nationwide is 4875.
Okay.
And we got a quote for 9,985, and one for 6,975. So, I just bummed out people at Nationwide, probably.
I don't see the one for, uh, 4875.
You sure did.
I know.
You sure did. But we're happy. I know. We're happy. Hey, Jen, dude's due diligence, that's why we go out for bids.
So, is this going to fall under the emergency funding budget?
Stuck together.
All right, are we, are we good with everything?
We're good.
All right, so we have motion and support to hire Nationwide Construction Group for $4,875 to do our fencing at the water department. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we have a, a quote from Project Control to do, um, some studies and some drilling and deciphering of CYR police station is sinking. And then also give us a recommendation as to what to do to how to fix it. Um, I think, Chris, you looked at, did you mark?
Yeah, I looked at it.
I have, it's, uh, it's getting worse and worse, I think every time it rains, or the sun beats on the roof, it gets worse, I don't know.
Or if it freezes.
It's every day.
Pretty soon, we're going to have a tunnel from our holding cells out to the parking lot.
Don't let that out.
Board, this is a, this is a, an issue that appears to be ongoing, and one that we should probably be very proactive about.
Yeah.
The longer we wait, the, the more potential expense we're going to have down the road. So, coach, a, a chief coach did his due diligence, really did some great investigative work, and then we, we all spoke to the lead engineer, PCE Anthony, and it appears right now we're, we're all on the same page, so, I'm going to champion this and, and put this forth in a motion. We offer approval for the police department to support the building structural inspection at $5,187 to PCE Engineering.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support, any more discussion?
You know, after we're done with the inspection, I'd like to see a overview of that, I think the board should, and see where we're at, especially if you're going to provide remediation, and see where we're at.
Yeah, their findings?
Yeah, findings.
Yeah, absolutely, that's, that's part of this bid pack, if I'm not mistaken.
The oversight and, and suggestions at the end of it, so...
Any more, uh, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. And last but not least, um, we have, and it came to me just today, a work order, I think I mentioned in my supervisor's report, the last one or something, um, we had, we had a work order to repave Lake Point, and it came in underbid, like by 30 grand, and I know we were looking at doing Muskrat Run, um, and that so happens to be about 30 grand, but if we link the two projects together, um, it'll qualify for the, the county match. Um, if we did Muskrat Run on its own, it would not qualify for that match program, uh, just because, um, there's about three different reasons. And, uh, so they called me up, Bill Hazelton, and said, hey, Arty, you want to group these together? And, uh, he goes, from what we were looking at, doing Lake Point originally, it probably cost you $2,000, and you'll get another road paved. So, I thought that was pretty good, and so I'm presenting to the board for approval, um, that, uh, and we'll, we'll be utilizing our, um, full 50,000 match at the county lots every year. Um, you know, if we didn't, uh, we'd be getting 35,000 in match from the county, just to do the Lake Point project, so... Does everyone understand what I'm saying?
So, the complete run at Muskrat from, from M29 to Taft?
Yep, yep. And as you see, it's, uh, Lake Point and Muskrat Run. And at Lake Point, you know, we're, we're going from, we're doing the old section, not where the, the new subdivision is, uh, down towards the end. Um, and from between Taft and M29 along our park, we're actually widening it, um, it's about two and a half feet, too narrow than a, a, a regular county road should be of that type. Uh, so we're pulling down three trees and moving a couple things, and, um, making that, that section wider. And, uh, yeah, they, they, in original estimate, they thought that would be more costly than they anticipated when they got their bids back, so, um, like I say, we're, we're getting another small road done for almost free.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2020 Local Road Funding Assistant Program revised agreement to include Lake Point Road and Muskrat Run.
Support.
Motion and support. Any, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kupel?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, next we have board member comments. Cindy, you have any?
Um, just a reminder, the presidential primary is March 10th. Um, if you're not registered to vote, you still have time to do so, um, you just need to register in person here at the Clay Township offices, Monday through Thursday, from 8:00 to 6:00.
All right, Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Chief Coach for welcoming you around this morning, uh, looking at all the sunken, uh, issues that we have over there, and thank you for your time, appreciate that. And I'm looking forward to the North Channel waterfront. We haven't, couldn't have a special name for that project, or do we have one already?
Uh, there's been a couple of them kicked around.
Okay, all right, well, that's good, we'll be looking forward to that.
That's right.
You know, as we get down here with these grants and everything, uh, at some point in time, um, I don't want to create additional work for everyone, but I'd like to see a cost avoidance chart, where we capture all this stuff, so where, you know, the county's paying for it, the state's paying for it, and something that we didn't pay for, and I call that cost avoidance, so that'd be nice to have.
Yeah, no, I, no, I...
Understand?
Yeah, I, I do, and let me tell you, uh, this past month, we got a million-dollar saw grant.
Yeah, right.
We, we basically got $1.4 million for the Flamingo Bridge, but the best one's the $2,000 for the tires.
Yeah, that's right, that was the best, well, that's what brought it to a head.
With 20, with 20 pages of paperwork.
Totally bet on it.
Yeah, so, it's, uh, we've been very fortunate and very, uh, um, yeah, very fortunate, we've been...
Yeah.
Had a good... And let me tell you, a lot of people are envious, so it, it goes not unnoticed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, the guys up in Marysville, you know, Arty, how are you getting all those grants and everything?
They're very competitive.
They are very competitive, and I'll tell you what, five, six years ago, we were rocking it, uh, we got two Sturgeon beds put in, uh, a million dollars apiece, one in the middle channel, one at North Channel by Russell Island, and the, um, the Crispin Drain, I mean, that was like a $4 million, $3.8 million, uh, one. Um, no, we'd been very fortunate, so... Joanne?
We certainly have a lot of things on the table, and a lot of them are, won't be done for a year, or a year and a half, or this, and so it's hard to, it's good, but it's, like Mark says, you know, you want to know where we're at and keep track of all of these, and don't forget about them, and just keep working on them, and Arty, you do a fine job that way, too.
Well, one, and I'm kind of waiting for, uh, um, actually, the DNR themselves, you know, we still have the, um, the Marsh, uh, Ha, Habitat, um, project for St. John's Marsh.
Oh, that, yeah.
And, um, you know, that's, that's a biggie.
That's a cool one.
That's a biggie, and, uh, um...
Are these your public events?
Huh?
Are these your public events?
No, no, they're Joanne's.
Yeah, yeah. She brought them all up there, off to the place.
Um, and Chris was very, uh, good with that, and, uh, they're actually doing a couple of their smaller projects first to test out the new, uh, legislation, and, uh, so, I'm hoping to see that pop up here pretty soon.
Something in our lifetime, maybe?
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe, you're welcome. Anything else, Joanne?
Well, that's it, that's, that's...
Okay, Sandy?
I got a couple things tonight, actually. I was encouraging everyone to get out and exercise your right to vote next Tuesday. Um, I will be committing some time that day to work the elections, so I look forward to seeing everyone from our township out there. Um, I also wanted to thank Chief Rose for staying ahead of our hiring, um, changes in your department. Thank you very much for your leadership there, and I am very excited to see this part come to fruition, hopefully in the next year or two. That's all I got.
Which, which part, which one?
The county part.
Which one?
Yeah, we got our other one.
The, the six lakes or seven rivers.
Yeah.
Six rivers.
So, I don't have much, um, I do want to double back on something you said about the Flamingo Road Bridge.
Yeah.
Um, do we find it, you know, be prudent to schedule periodic inspection of that bridge since we may postpone that?
Yeah, I talked to them.
Is that on us, is that on our shoulders?
No, it's kind of, I talked to them, uh, you might recall, it was sometime last summer, there were some structural issues, and they, uh, we put a bunch of steel underneath it, and, um, they, they did look at that, and they're real comfortable, I know the top deck doesn't look good, because there's all, you know, holes, they got it, the patch, but they reassured me that with those structural improvements that they did back at that time, that that's, that's still, they're, they're, they're very comfortable with it.
Okay.
Um, and just to let you know, on that project, I'm sure we'll be talking more about it, but because how that build, that, that bridge, just, just because you asked, Chris.
Is this your yard public event?
Please, so I'm doing, I'm doing Chris's PSA. Please, so I'm doing, I'm doing Chris's PSA. They, what, what they're planning on doing, because they can't cut that bridge in half and keep one lane open and build the other half, they gotta remove it. And we're actually bringing in, uh, a barge with ramps for a temporary bridge, um, while they, for the construction. And, um, I, you know, at first, they were talking about, you know, weight limits at twenty, I, I, you gotta have at least thirty thousand pounds rated for this barge that they bring in. And they told me that they would. So, that would cover a fire truck, garbage trucks, um, things along those, those lines, so. All right.
Kristy, is there something you would like Artie to talk about?
Artie, could you tell everyone that-
Pay your taxes.
No, today was the last day to pay taxes at the township, so if you have, um, delinquent twenty nineteen winter or previous, you need to contact the county starting tomorrow.
Okay.
You span on that?
Yeah, I do. Like Chrissy will say, um, you know, everyone's paying your taxes and everything, I just wanna reiterate, it's somewhere between twelve and thirteen percent of that tax bill, of, of your total tax bill stays in the township. All the rest of it goes other places, so, you know, I know everyone pays a lot of money in taxes and everyone thinks that.
I do have charts on the website, Artie, if you wanna tell everyone. I have a little pie chart that shows where the taxes go.
And we have a pie chart on the website, but twelve, thirteen percent of your total bill stays here. And the rest goes to schools, to the county, for, for this and that, so, um, are you done?
I think so.
Okay. All right, I just wanna think, I, I thought that joint meeting we had with the other two boards last, uh, week was, was good, we had some good discussion. And, uh, I, uh, yeah, I, a lot of positive stuff, I think, will come out of that. I'm constantly getting beat up about, you know, water issues and this and that, and, uh, we're, we're dealing with them as best we can. And, um, I did wanna say, Chris at, uh, Six Rivers has been doing a lot of work to make this project happen. And it probably wouldn't have worked without him j- jumping in the mix. And, uh, this is what he does, he brokers these deals all over the state, and, uh, he's, uh, he is really excited about this project. He, he lives about two hours away. I say, "Hey, Chris, we're gonna do this commitment, do, do I need to come out?" And, "No, that's okay, no, I'm coming out." You know, he, he's very committed to this, and, um-
Agreed for.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of other people will be, too.
Right, exactly. And, um, yeah, we have a lot, lots of stuff happening, lots of moving parts right now, but, you know, it's all positive. A lot, a lot of cool stuff is, um, is coming out and happening, and I'm, I'm grateful for it, and, um-
I have something else.
Oh. Okay. What?
I want to commend our police department for the very cool cars that they have.
Yes.
And I believe, is it back in town?
Yes.
It's all leathered, lighted, just ready to be on the road. Very good.
Hey, can I get a ride one? Uh, never mind.
In the backseat, all the way up to the county.
We can arrange for that.
Yeah.
The, uh, the blue and, the blue and gold look very nice on that car, excited to see that.
Halli-Mack is envious of us, by the way.
Yeah. It looked good.
Four no longer offered the black and whites, so, we had to come up with something, and Officer Shane did a pretty good job of, uh, designing that, so.
Very good.
I like it.
Heck, yes.
That's very important, your, your image.
It's all about community pride.
Your image, yeah.
It's about community pride and, and we're building it more and more every day, I feel. All right, does anybody else have any thing to say for me?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I would like to support.
Here, Chris? All in favor? Thanks for coming, everybody. We'll see you later.